All right, we're back in open session discussing our item 6.3, the UCP proposed changes. The other, so you're gonna perhaps-
Take out the notes?
Yeah, take out the notes and then check with surrounding superintendents or county and CSBA, figure out to what extent other districts have done this. As we were pointing out, there is a one, option one, option two, which on my hard copy is around page 73 of the 100-page document that Ms. Tameri sent out. And this has to do with whether or not the compliance officer shall prepare the final writ decision, or whether we wanted to add another layer of having the board consider an appeal, as it were.
Right, and either way, it's within 60 days. So if the board wants to choose the option where an employee or staff person can file a complaint, maybe it's a discrimination complaint or harassment complaint.
Time out. This is about only a situation where an employee is the complainant?
No, 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 I'm sorry. I just, as an example, it could be in an organization, it could be the complaint-
Well, it's usually a student.
It could be a student, it could be a staff member, right?
Could be. It's usually a student.
Okay, so I think the option for the board, as you were saying, is does the board want to allow a complaint, a complainant, to have the ability to appeal the decision directly to the board first, before exercising their option, they have in either instance to file a complaint, I believe, or follow up with the CDE within 15 days?
Follow, yes. So the, under the UCP, you have 15 days to file an appeal with the California Department of Education, and I'm currently going through that process and have a meeting with the department tomorrow on a very large matter involving a very large district. Okay, but yes, so, I mean, is there any questions about this item? A particular point or comment? In terms of a discussion, I would just do what every district I know does, which is have the compliance officer be the one that makes the decision, and if there's a problem with it, appeal to the CDE. But I don't know, if others feel differently, I would say, you know, as it is, the UCP is, it's there, it's something, it does provide some opportunity to have a complaint heard and redressed. It's not, in my experience, been the most effective way to resolve a complaint, certainly not at the district level. But, in any event, that's, so I don't see the need to add another layer of potential delay in the process. Others feel differently or the same option? Member Pats, do you have any?
No, good. I want to see the final.
Okay, so it seems like-
Option one, keep it as you-
Option one in the final, but we're not- People can think about it and say something different when it comes before us again next time. The other, final question I had was about the gender identity discrimination, which that was, I was explaining why you're out of the room earlier. The last time we amended the UCP, there was a specific complaint filed in our district. We addressed the problem, worked it out with Office of Civil Rights, and one of the things that we did at that time was amend our UCP to make sure we were adequately covering, because it was about, I think there was gender discrimination, but not expressly gender identity discrimination in our UCP. So we did add that. I don't want to lose that. Now, I haven't gone through, compared word to word, you said OCR and CDE and CSBA have all met, and so perhaps they took our language and put it in there, I don't know. But can you double-check on that and-
Sure.
Make sure that we're not losing any of our gender identity discrimination amendments?
I certainly will. I see, as a quick glance, gender-based harassment, that may be, or may say gender identity, that could be, may, it may be the same that you're referring to, or no?
No, gender-based could be, it's not as explicit as-
Gender identity?
Yeah, a gender identity claim.
We'll go ahead and double-check that.
So see what we say in ours, I guess, then, that'd be my starting point. Okay, any other thoughts or comments on the UCP item? Okay, I think we'll not act on it tonight, but wait for a subsequent take on this one. Any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, why don't we go on to, whoops, I lost my feed in the interim. Item 6.4, which is-
Board delegates.
The delegates, the delegates have-
And maybe, do you want to also explain to our newer board members, our newest board member, what this is?
Yes, so, we're a member of the California School Board Association, and as most districts are, and the CSBA has a congress or body of representatives, and the state is broken up into different regions, and each region has a certain number of representatives. And so we are electing, is what this is about. They meet, I want to say, twice a year, maybe once a year. I know I've addressed them on, once, but I think they meet twice a year and decide some, it's not the executive committee of CSBA, but the people on the executive committee and the president tend to come out of that body, and so, anyway. So we're electing people to represent our interests or not in that process. Any, any questions about this before we turn to discussion? Any public comment on the CSB delegates? Seeing none, discussion, people have, have any thoughts on delegates they liked or didn't like? We get to vote for four out of seven. I guess we don't have to put forth four if we don't, if we don't want to. We have to put forth any. Go ahead, Member Merrim.
Yes, should we mix it up and put our thoughts towards the non-incumbents, just to-
That'd be one way to go. If you think the incumbents aren't doing good, throw them out. Member Pats?
You know, I, I think Nancy Thomas and Amy Miller have done a fine job. I'm also a fan of Desiree and Craig, the two non-incumbents, so-
Craig's last name, is that Who, or?
Uh, no, Desiree Campbell and Craig Bueno.
Craig Bueno, okay. Okay. Do you know the two incumbents you mentioned?
Yeah, I mean, not, you know, we're not buddies, but yeah, I've come into contact with them at various times, so.
So I personally know none of these individuals. I, the three that I liked, from looking at their applications, were Desiree Campbell, Arkin, and Who. And now I need to sort of pull up, it's actually easier on the hard copy. Why I like them, but it seems to me we typically get, in this, in this selection, board members from the suburban districts, and not so much the urban districts. And so, since we're in urban district, I had a bias toward trying to get representation from more urban districts, that was one of my, one of my thoughts. One of the candidates, I'm not sure who it is, seemed to be a little too much of a cheerleader for CSBA.
Who was that?
I think it's one of the incumbents, so. Yeah, I think that was Miller. But, you know, more than supporting CSBA, I liked, what did I like about Mr. Who? School funding was a priority. The fact that he was from Alameda, which is a little more closer to our demographic. He's been a classroom teacher, or instructor, at least in higher ed. Familiarity with community college students, career pathways, so. And what did I like about Arkin? She is from a suburban district. But even so, she's, she's an incumbent and seemed, I liked her, her statement of interest. Seemed to have a fair amount of, not just education, but other community experience, too. Member Merrim, or Collins Rogers, did you have any particular favorites?
After looking through each of the candidates by graphical sketch forms, and to seeing some of the information that they provided on their applications, I would say that my number one and number two, not for any particular, you know, reason, vice versa, could be Who, as well as Desiree Campbell.
Sorry, Member Pats, your, your three, was it, or did you have four?
I get four.
What were they again?
Miller, Thomas, Campbell, and Bueno. Although I know Arkin as well, and she's fine. I actually even know Hinsky, peripherally. I think Hugh is new to the board in Alameda, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, Merrim?
I'd say, Member Hugh, Thomas, and Campbell.
Okay, we all had Campbell, so that makes that easy. Three of us had Hugh. Two, you had Thomas too, right, Member Collins?
No.
Oh, you didn't, that was, who was your second one? Hugh and Campbell?
Mm-hmm, those are mine, too. And then if I had a three, it would be Miller.
All right, so that's at least two for Miller, two for Thomas. Maybe two for Arkin, you said Arkin.
I just, I'm just saying I know her, I'm not-
Yeah, okay. I thought you said, well, she'd be fine.
Yeah, she'd be fine.
So Hugh and Campbell. Seems Hugh Campbell, Miller, and Thomas. Have I had the most? Yeah, that's four.
Hugh, Campbell, Miller, and Tom, okay.
Are we okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so do we have a motion to, I guess, are we voting for? We're voting for our CSBA delegate assembly votes for Member Unified to be candidates Hugh, Campbell, Miller, and Thomas.
So moved?
Second up.
Roll call?
President Affeldt?
Yes.
Board Member Pats?
Yes.
Vice President Merrim?
Yes.
Board Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Those will be our, our votes, you know, it's kicking off again. Superintendent, could you let us know how we did?
Results, sure, sure.
We never learn, actually, if anyone listened to us. All right, so the next item is, is the Casey update.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Which, you can present, will I-
Sure.
Log in again?
All right. Item 6.5 tonight regards the California High School exit exam, or the Casey. This is an informational-only update for the board. Purpose is to update the board and the public on the status of the district's student Casey data as it relates to the suspension of the testing requirement by the state. This is a little bit of history in our write-up here, beginning with the class of 2006. Students in California were required to pass the California High School exit exam, or Casey, to demonstrate competency in a subject matter areas. The governor has recently suspended the administration of the Casey. However, in that change and suspension, students who previously did not pass the Casey now have the opportunity to still receive their diploma, if that was the only reason that they did not graduate from high school. So I have a little bit of data I just want to share with the board this evening, and let the board know our plan. From 2006 to 2015, we had about 500 high school seniors come through our high school. Going back over our data across those years, as best as we can tell currently from the data, we have about 60 students who did not, for various reasons, graduate from high school. Now, the reason for not graduating could have been also due to not having sufficient credits completed, but it may also have been due to not passing one or both sections of the Casey. We are taking some steps to determine if we can narrow down, from those 60 names, to know which students did not specifically pass the high school exit exam. But regardless, we are currently looking at these 60 students, and our plan is to send a letter to the last known address for each of these students, letting them know of the change to the Casey, and that they have the opportunity, if the not passing the Casey was the only reason they didn't graduate, or not graduated or did not receive a diploma. We're placing that letter and information on our website. If we get returned mail, which we suspect we may for some students, our plan is to go ahead and use the internet and Google or Facebook students by their names to see if we can still connect with them. And our target date to get a letter out to these 60 students, or possibly fewer, if we can narrow that down, is March the 15th. This will be a long process, it will, as it will require quite a bit of time of staff, if students, when students come in, so that when we go through the process, that is, of determining was the reason they didn't graduate just the Casey exit exam, or was it also due to not having sufficient, a sufficient amount of credit? So that is our plan. I know all the districts are, well, many of the districts, I've, other superintendents have told me that they're working on different endeavors to get this information out. I know Hayward was doing that, and trying to get students to know that you have the opportunity to still receive your diploma. I believe the county superintendent, she polled us in a meeting recently, and I concurred with her and the superintendents that we thought it would be great if the county puts an ad in some of the larger papers, and so that I believe is the county superintendent's plan as well. So that's an update for you this evening on the Casey.
Do you know if most of our fellow, at least Alameda County districts, are trying to do any outreach?
I don't have a hard number, because it was, it was a little bit of a general verbal conversation at the table with the superintendents, we didn't, I don't, I don't recall. I believe the county superintendent may have polled them, though, I can find out if you like.
It'd be good to know.
Yeah.
My sense is it's hit and miss, that some-
Some districts are-
Districts are doing it, some aren't.
Yeah.
The state has sort of created this quandary of creating a requirement, and then yanking it back years later, but not providing districts the support to do the outreach, to notify students. So, that's where we're at, I'm glad we're doing it, and I appreciate the time staff is putting into it.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it to our attention as well.
Well, and I think you've already had a student or two come in on their own, right?
We have.
And get a diploma.
We have, a few students did come to our attention, and they have come in, and they were able to get their diploma.
And move forward with their life.
Yeah.
That's good. Other questions, comments?
Quick question, so I know that students, is it still eight chances that they get to pass the Casey?
It, it was sort of unlimited, but you just ran out of time eventually.
Right.
But right now, it's not administered anymore.
Oh.
They suspended it.
So if you haven't passed it, it's not being administered. So that is what occasioned the, the original, the original plan was just to stop administering it, but that put the class of 2015 in a quandary. So then, then Plan B was to exempt class of 2015 from the requirement, and then, sort of at the last minute, the governor's office said, well, why don't we just exempt everyone? So that's what happened, going back to 2006, so. It's not being administered, but anyone who has never passed, if that's the only reason you didn't get a diploma, you can now get a diploma. So if you know anyone from your era, get the word out.
Now we all passed with flying colors. Everybody walked in my class.
That's good, that was a good year.
2010 was on the ball.
Any public comment on this item? All right, I think that takes us back to the ratification list.
Yes, and Mr. Baker, thank you for being here tonight. We know it's an unusual evening for us to have a board meeting. And we have, Mr. Baker, we have a couple of questions on the ratification list. John, is that mic on? I don't know. There's a power button on top, to the right, I believe.
The one that says mute. Hello?
Mr. Merrim, you had-
Yes, good evening, Mr. Baker. Quick question pertaining to COR number 270, the power and lighting ads.
Yes.
To start off, was the site adequately lit per code for safety and basically for, basically for safety reasons of like point, I think it's .1 foot candle is required throughout the site? And was it adequately lit at that time, and then we just added? Or is this because there were no lights, and it was basically a darkened space that had no ability to be, for safety purposes?
There are two issues, actually, good question. The site lighting, what was lit, what was lit in the bid document, scope of work, as designed by DSK, was code-required lighting at the exit paths. And so there are various exit paths throughout the site, mostly community commons, but also as you, as you get out towards the field and the gym, fewer pathways were lit. We reviewed that, and working with the architects, and also with the district and city at our Monday meetings, determined we need to have some additional lighting. One area of lighting, for example, was the basketball courts and the playground were not lit because they're not required exit paths. That's just a decision that the architect had made. So we added some site lighting throughout that to make those much more better lit, so that during an evening event, if there was an activity in the field, parents could have maybe small children in the playground area, or kids could be playing basketball in the evening. So we added some lighting for those exterior areas. The other part of this, which is probably more, about more of two-thirds of the amount, actually, is that the underside of the canopies, during the value engineering process, we were going to remove some canopies, and then we went back in because planning wanted to. We had, the lighting had come out also, so we put lighting back into those canopies. And so mostly was the, all the lighting for the canopies that we were going to remove had come out. If you recall, at one of our other ratification items, we added the canopies back in, and this is to add that lighting into those canopies as well.
Thank you.
My question is one that I typically ask on these ratification lists, in terms of the contingencies. How are we doing? I know you, the first item for $26,000, you said, is funded by construction contingency, and the rest, there's no information on that, so is this coming out of bond money, or?
Each of these items are funded by construction contingency. We've been budgeting these items for quite some time. In fact, all of these items were included in the budget when we had our most recent discussion about the additional bond funds and contingency. So none of these are expected, we're finalizing, we're, all of these items are finalizing pricing, and now coming forth to the board.
Okay, so you had them in, you-
That's correct, these have all been in the budget for quite some time.
This is not part of the new bond proceed?
No, no, the new bond is, if you recall, was for some specific items.
Yeah.
But these are all coming out of budgeted contingency, and these have all been budgeted since last fall.
Okay, and how are we doing on the, in terms of how much contingency is left? And do you still anticipate we're going to spend that down?
Yeah, I think, again, is, I, at a, the January reports that I gave to the board, as well as city schools, as well as the Citizens Oversight Committee, I had a snapshot of how we're doing on those contingency categories. Our, right now, we're, we've probably only maybe 1% above those figures overall. We've not had that many change orders come up, any new items come up. So we're still doing, I think, better than expected. I think it will probably end up at the end of the project, being about at what had been originally budgeted for contingency for change orders.
Okay, that's, that's my, and you also answered, have we seen anything new, big? And you say no.
Correct.
Sort of what we expected so far. All right, are there questions?
No.
Public comment on this item? Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the ratification list?
So moved.
Second, I'll second. Roll call, please.
Board President Affeldt?
Yes.
Board Member Pats?
Yes.
Vice President Merrim?
Yes.
Board Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Okay, now we are on to discussion item 6.1, which is- Now we are on to discussion item 6.1, which is, uh, ECCL update.
Yes, thank you. We have Mr. Baker here to give us the current update regarding the ongoing project activities and status for the Emeryville Center for Community Life. Mr. Baker? And, and Mr. Baker, that is the PDF, so you may have to scroll or use the, I don't know.
Correct.
The error keys might work.
That's what I commonly use.
Okay, good.
Uh, good evening. Again, just an orientation slide so that everyone's aware of which buildings are which, because I'll discuss buildings A, B, C, D, and E. Building A is the community building at the corner of 53rd and San Pablo. Building B, the admin building along San Pablo Avenue. Building C is the K through eight school in the middle of the site. Building D is the high school at the corner of 47th and San Pablo. Building E is the pool and gym. Just to highlight the construction updates, the, the gym is now complete and operational. Uh, the last remaining part of the gym to complete is the pool, which is now about 85% complete. The pool should be complete about March 20th, which is actually on the contract schedule with the exception of some rain days that we will incorporate. So we're in good shape there. We're planning now on, on that, closing out the pool, opening that. The first activity will take place at the pool actually is there's, the city's hosting a small triathlon in, in mid-April. And so we'll be using the pool for its first use, at least in that event, maybe use it before that, once we get things up and operational. But the pool's, the pool work has gone really quite well. And we've actually, other than rain, been right on schedule for that. And so that'll be done. I'll show some photos of that in a minute. High school, again, the interior work is complete except for the, the parts, which we strategically held back on. We are actually in our efforts to expedite the high school completion. We're going to, we're putting together a plan to put some temporary walls in so we can condition the space and get that working early. That'll help us move forward to complete the high school. That's something that we finalized just this week, so we realized that we can actually do that and then, and expedite that part of the work. The elevator stair deck work is now well underway. If you drive by 47th, you can see the big tall posts for the elevator stair structure. We've got all those footings are now excavated and we're going to start pouring concrete there next week. The building A, building A, the community building is really nearly complete. All the painting is done. Ceiling work is going in right now. And that building will probably be complete at the end of April for, for use if we were wanting to do that. Building B is all, you can see if you drive by, all the exterior building papers on it. We're getting ready to stucco that building. All the windows are in and the roof is complete. So that building is just about closed in now, so we can start interior, the interior sheet rock and finish work. Building C, if you've seen, all the exterior sheathing is now on, that yellow board, all the framing is complete, all the mechanical, electrical plumbing roughing is complete. And the roofing is also complete. We now have the roof on that building. So very, as soon as we get the windows in and that window work, I think, starts in two weeks, we'll have that building closed in and we'll be able to start doing interior sheet rock. So things are moving rapidly. We've had, we've, we have been fortunate in that February has not been as wet a month as January was. March is projected to be wet again, but who knows? But we've had some good progress the last couple of weeks, as you'll see. Again, high school completion, we've held back on those finishes, but because we're going to put some temporary walls in, that'll allow us not only to finish the interior work, but actually as that deck work is outside, even occupy the work while there's still some exterior deck work to go. So that's our latest strategy. We have a scheduled work session tomorrow with Turner. One thing I'm going to be talking about at the city schools meeting next week is again, a potential Saturday work plan to take to council. We're looking at targeted Saturdays for building D between now and the end of May. And also targeted days for the K through eight school in May, June, and July. And so we're formulating that plan. We're looking at going to the first board meeting, the first council meeting in April. But I want to have a discussion with the, in the forum of the city schools group, the joint council and board next week, next Thursday, to have that discussion. And we'll present a draft version of that plan for, for review and comment before we formulate it and take it to the city council.
Say again the dates. Go to city council.
I'm sorry, the city council would be the first meeting in April, which is the first week in April.
And the work would be May, June, July, as you said?
We would look at doing Saturday work for, related to building D in April and May. And then for the K through eight school in May, June, and July. Building, this is a bit of a dark photograph here. Building A, the exterior is, exterior and all the windows are now complete. Everything, actually, this is interior of the main, the main commuter room. You can now see the painting is complete, the ceiling grid is in. What remains in, in this building are finishes, ceiling grid, ceilings, flooring, doors, casework. So we actually have just about another, about seven or eight weeks to finish to complete this building. You'll see that, we've got all the, all the, that's all the ductwork and the ceiling grid in. And so in the next couple of weeks, ceiling panels, ceiling panels will be going in, in that, in that space. This is a view from the second story of the building B lobby, looking towards A. There's a, this was taken on the one rainy day we did have, but you can see building A in the distance is, is, the exterior work is complete. Building B now, you can see that the black, all that black color on the walls is the building paper, the exterior. That's the first layer that goes on before the stucco work. All the windows are complete. We start doing stucco work on this building at the end of next week. And so that building is now closed in, so we can now proceed with interior finishes for the interior drywall for that building. You can see kind of more in detail, the scaffolding is all up so that we can, the, the subcontractors can start installing the lath and plaster. This is the interior B, so all the framing and mechanical, electrical plumbing roughing is done. So once this building is closed in, now we can start doing sheet rock. So the sheet rock and drywall work is the next step inside building B. All of this, this is hard to see also, but all of the, the infrastructure for the restroom is, is in, are in too. So once this is sheet rocked and tiled, those fixtures can be installed. Exterior of building D is complete except for the two walls that face the deck and except for the operable windows, which we're putting it all at once later this spring. Again, there's the, if you walk there, the painting of the walls all done, but you see the flooring. The ceilings actually are now, the ceiling grid is actually now being installed because we're doing that all at once so that we can economize on the installation. So again, the doors, casework, flooring, and now the ceilings are underway. And then when we get the, those temporary walls I just spoke of, and we're going to go ahead and start going pretty quickly on completing the finishes for the interior of the building. So you can see the paint colors there. Outside of building C, this now is complete. This, this photograph was taken last week. That yellow board is the sheathing. The exterior sheathing is now, I'd say about 95% complete on the exterior of the building. Next goes windows. The roofing, the roof of this building is now complete. So in about a month's time, we'll be closed in in building C also, and we can commence with the drywall and, and the interior of that building. You can see all the framing is done. This is inside the, the multi-use room, which is a nice big space. We did a, we took some of the teachers from Annie Yates through a tour last week for this facility, and so they enjoyed seeing what that space is like. Again, we've got, we've got framing complete. You can see all the works on the ceiling. We have some drywall, what's called priority walls up high where ductwork is, those are in. So we're going to basically, once we get the windows in, we'll be completing the drywall in the K through eight school. This is the gym. This is a photograph that I, I believe we showed the, I believe this might have been, this is the girls' basketball practice. You can see they're using this facility every day now. That shows the bleachers with the ECCL logo when those unfold. When they fold up flat, flat against the wall, you can see they, they have ECCL on them, so it's kind of a neat feature. This is the exit path, so that, that you can see, this actually, construction fence has now got mesh on it. This is so you can, these are the emergency exits, so you can exit the gym during construction. We've, we've been very careful and we have a, a site meeting once a week and then our owner, architect, contractor meeting once a week, talking about site safety and security to make sure that we have this, that we are operating this facility so that the, the students and public using the facility are isolated from the construction. It's something we're, we're very careful about and we meet twice a week to make sure that we're keeping up with all those protocols. This is the, this, these are new photographs of the gym locker room. These are the pool locker rooms. So again, the gym locker rooms are complete and in use. These are the locker rooms for the pool. And there you can see a photograph from a week ago that the, the, now the gutter work is now complete. And the last concrete work in here is actually the, the finished plaster work that will go in the pool. So that plaster work should be done in the first week in March. And there's another photograph of, of this. So the last piece that we'll have is the deck. As I mentioned last time, a lot of our planning meetings now are in relation to move-in operations and maintenance. Furniture purchase in progress, the building, the gym furniture is, purchases are complete. All the security AV data telecom scope outside of Turner's contract is complete. Purchasing is in progress. We've had a number of move planning meetings with faculty and staff. We had an orientation meeting at Annie Yates week before last and at, 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 at the Santa Fe site also, right after that, to talk about planning. We introduced Elizabeth Bornstein of Swinburne, who's going to be coordinating a lot of the move planning, working, she'll be the interface between the movers and, and the faculty and staff. And we talked about timelines and also how the process is going to work. And so those meetings actually were, were very informative and went quite well. We did, and we will be working with that, those groups over the next several weeks to start planning for those moves. We have again, a monthly programming meeting to talk about the shared use of the facility. In fact, both of these meetings we have tomorrow afternoon. The program meeting is to talk about how we program things together. That, that group is the city and district now, specifically the gym use, scheduling the gym. Again, the city sort of is the owner of the gym, if you will, from a scheduling standpoint. And the district then goes through the city's community decor, community recreation department, Pedro Jimenez, to schedule the gym. We've had quite a few activities in there. The city's had activities. There was a youth activity with the Golden State Warriors. And then we have a practice, basketball practice every afternoon. And also we've had several games there already. The operations and maintenance bill meetings are also held once a month. It's a joint meeting with the city and district to coordinate maintenance. Obviously, we're actively maintaining built, the, the gym building now. Now planning, the big planning now is for the pool opening and that operations. And so as, as facilities come online, that, that becomes more of an active group that, that where we, where they plan and, and, and coordinate how we're maintaining the buildings. And again, we're working with the city and district to budget the capital replacement reserve, which is required by the JOA, and develop, and also developing the annual maintenance budgets.
Mr. Baker, before you turn the page, would you mind diminishing that and for your next slide? I'm, I'm missing a slide and I have it on the desktop. I was going to ask you. I know I'm, I'm piggybacking on your slide presentation. If you diminish that one on the top left of the desktop, you'll have to, yeah, hide that too, sorry. Hit escape on your, hit escape. And then see if you can diminish that one more time. Yeah, try not to, you're catching that. You, you can drag that over. I'm sorry. You might have to, now, let me help you out. Sorry, I got you.
I'm not familiar with this.
No, I'm sorry. We had to use, our laptop died, we could begin to use mine to convert. There's one picture before we go back to our next one. So I didn't mean to exclude this picture. You may have seen this, I think, with the architect for Ms. McDonald's. Do you want to copy? So this picture, before we look at the next couple of slides of Mr. Baker's slide deck, I just wanted to put in front of all of us again, as I'm learning more and getting more comfortable and developing my own knowledge of the facility and the site. And I was at, I was at the site visiting last week with a couple of teachers who are now on the Annie Yates ECCL transition team. They volunteered to help with the transition. Ms. McDonald and Ms. Dunn are also coordinating efforts and working with us together and the staff. But this slide, I think, is a really good one in terms of information because it shows with those arrows, the direction, once the gates are locked, those directional arrows show which way the gates push open. And Mr. Baker, if I get this wrong, please feel free to correct me. So if you'll notice, section five, which typically we've been planning to be the tentatively K5 area for the most part, no one can come into that area from the high school area, from the exterior, from the section two area where people can come in to visit the city office or see the receptionist. So I just wanted the board again to see this in terms of safety and the potential zones of use that we have on the facility. I thought it was helpful for me and I wanted to share that with the board. And the yellow dots, I think we mentioned before, are the locations of security cameras that we have around the campus. And then if there are no questions about.
Question on that.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
On your arrows, every arrow only goes in one direction.
That's right.
So is, are some of those arrows two direction and some one? Is there a way to graphically?
They're all actually, if all the gates are unlocked, I believe they're, they can go both ways. But once those gates are secured and locked, they only push open, I was, I assume it's a panic bar, a push bar.
Yeah, so what those green arrows shows, the direction of traffic, the directional travel with a panic bar, like you're used to, sort of like these doors where, so you can at any time exit in there, at any time you can exit in the, in the direction of the arrow. You, the only way you can go back through the reverse way is with, with a card key that would then be programmed for certain faculty and staff to access and go through those other ways.
But some, like the street entrances at three, certainly at two.
If those were locked, I, I guess, I think, I think.
So that's the point.
That's the point.
If it's locked.
If it's locked, that's a direction.
You can only go out.
Yes.
Presumably that would not be locked during the day.
Those two arrows to the right of section two would not be locked during the day. That's right.
But the, the arrows behind section two leading into section one and section five.
That's correct.
Those would be locked during the day.
Yes.
Is that the, so is there a way, maybe it's a different color?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Maybe those are red as opposed to the green?
Which ones? The red for the, for the ones on the interior?
The ones that are locked during the day.
Uh huh, uh huh.
Maybe you make those a different color.
Sure.
Than the ones that are unlocked during the day, so people can look at this and see, oh, that's where the public can get to. That's where the public cannot get to.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Good idea. Any other questions about this one slide for Mr. Baker? And then, Mr. Baker, if you go back to your PDF, if there are not any other questions, we continue with the same.
I had been at my last slide actually, so that concludes.
We've added some too. I don't know if you noticed, so, so go ahead and if you go back to that, that other document you diminished, you'll have to close that. You can close that photo to your right. There's an X at the top. And then yours, I think, it's the, Mr. Baker, it's the, there you go. Should be one more down, I believe. There you go. So this is the same picture. Thanks, Mr. Baker, I appreciate it. This is the same picture that we were just looking at, except based on some, you know, I am trying to develop this out. I spoke to the principals about a week ago and Ms. McDonald. I spoke to several teachers on the Annie Yates transition team and we were at the site last week talking about the space. So what I've started to do is try to develop out where I believe we would have supervision, the potential use and separation in areas where we would have students. You know, one of the benefits I had really hadn't clearly thought of is that you'll notice a couple of the red asterisks, they represent district staff. So we can actually have some additional district staff out helping with supervision in the mornings. So that actually increases our number of staff for supervision. So I, that hadn't occurred to me until last week as I was laying this out. So I wanted to kind of start to present this as I'm still developing it to the board and what I have so far. And then the next two slides, Mr. Baker, if you don't mind, I appreciate it, just show as the day progresses, the high school kids go in, for example, and then you have a potential rotation between either half, the two halves of the football soccer field between middle school and high school PE or high school PE is in their half of the gym with the wall up and middle school PE has the entire football field or vice versa. The second through fifth grade teachers who should be doing PE on their own during the K1 recess, in this block of time typically, this is based on the current bell schedule at Annie Yates, could be using the other half of the gymnasium. They can be using section nine. And the teachers I spoke to from Annie Yates on the transition team said, instead of having K1 recess just in section five, as well as the other grades, why not take advantage of all this space? Let's, let's come up with a rotation so K1 students could sometimes be on the basketball court in section eight or that asphalt area playing. And then other days they could be with supervision as well in the section five area. Why not, the teachers said, why not take advantage of the, the space? So that's an example. And, Mr. Baker, if you go one more slide, it's just another time, it's 9:30 to 10:30. Same idea, just a, a draft sketch of what it might look like. I should have actually took, taken TK recess off of that. I should have actually took, taken TK recess off of that one. But I just wanted to start to put this in front of the board as I'm trying to develop this with the principals and teachers. And Miss McDonald and Miss Dunn are helping develop this coordination. We have a lot of planning to do, but I thought I would begin to get some of this in front of you.
Can you go back to the first one? Yeah, that, that, so first of all, this. This, 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 I assume you did it this way, assuming a K twelve in, in order to, because you were asked to say, well, what would the flow look like if everyone were on that campus at the same time?
That's correct, it was simply just my, just in my planning and drafting of this, so far, that's all I had, have come up with, with that assumption at the moment.
So if we did it some other way or used Annie Yates for some of the lower grades, then, then this becomes even that much easier?
Yeah, the K five in section five, that area there could be second grade or third grade through fifth grade.
Right. So, so let me try to digest, this is eight, eight-thirty in the morning, probably the most crowded, crowded time when everyone's, everyone's gonna be there at that.
It is, right now, it's assuming the high school and Annie Yates, both are starting at eight-thirty. I don't know if that'll be the case or not, but if, if we can, if that is the case, then that would potentially be the most crowded time. If we have alternating or staggered start times, then actually this picture actually, there are, there are, there are less students if we alter schedules by chance.
So I've heard you make reference to that from time to time. Can you, what, are you thinking about having the high school start at a different time or what? You know, have you discussed that with the teachers and parents? How, how does that, how do we decide that?
I haven't discussed it yet, it, it's crossed my mind from time to time. I, I have, I, well, I take that back, I did have some formal conversations with Dawn Turner, Mark Davis last year about it. And we, we created some different sketches of potential schedules. With the basic premise being, and the question for me as superintendent, why aren't we starting later for some of our students? There's a, there's a trend, I think, really that is logical to me across the country, that many high school or, high schools are starting school later and allowing the students to get some more rest and sleep. Forgot you're a high school parent. And, and so I've just posed the question, I know my experience in San Francisco was that, and this was K twelve, half of the schools in San Francisco start at seven fifty in the morning, half start at nine thirty. And that's simply due to bussing, so they can get two runs from the bus drivers without having to pay them any more money or overtime, I think. So that's the premise of what is behind the schedule in San Francisco. So I thought, well, we don't have that situation, we have a nice size to our district here in Emeryville. So has anyone asked this question, you know, why are we starting as early as we start? We have teachers who struggle to get there by eight-thirty, even at the K eight. And that's been an ongoing interesting issue. So it, it is a kind of a question I've pondered and I think it deserves some more thought and conversation. If the board likes, I would certainly be glad to bring that question back after some more conversation with Dawn and the teachers.
But if you did start later, then presumably at least the, section nine, I think those are basketball courts?
That, those are right, some, there's some seating there, some basketball courts.
That would be available for a K eight?
It'd be, yeah, it would be, it would be available maybe for the, the middle school grades.
And would we have supervision for that as well as the later supervision for the nine-twelve when they do come?
I think we do because the supervision for the nine-twelve isn't typically, most of our high school students, in my experience there, and our newest board member might certainly feel free to chime in if I have this one wrong. But they tend to get to the school and, and come right in. We have a little bit more on the, on the end, at the end of school where we see kids sometimes hanging out outside. But usually I've seen students come in, security guard opens the door and they come right in. So I haven't seen much of students hanging out outside at the current facility. Now, of course, this is a different layout, so I don't know if they'll be more attracted to it or not. But, but yes, that space, to answer your question, if I didn't, would be available and we would not have the, any overlap there.
You've got K five in the center, section five there, but also you've got fifth graders on the field?
Yeah, the thought was, and this again is another programming question or planning question, but that field is so large, why wouldn't we allow fifth graders, as an example, in the morning to have the option to go back and forth? And maybe that's the, certainly the sixth and seventh grade student designated area with fifth graders also able to make a choice between that area or the section five area. So I just, again, the thought was, why don't we take advantage of this, this great amount of space? Even the teachers last week were, were kind of stunned when they stood at the south end of section five and they looked back. I don't think they realized, and, and it's coming clearer to me as I walk the facility more with them, that how large that, that section five area is. So it's, there's a, there's a good amount of space we can take advantage of in this scenario.
What's going on in the multipurpose room?
There's a wall that cuts through the multipurpose room. I believe that room is about, and I, I, I wish I had the numbers in front of me. Mr. Baker, I'm not sure if you know, I, I think it's over four thousand square feet. I think it's about, it's more than twice the size of the current Annie Yates multipurpose room, maybe.
Yeah, I think that each half is roughly the size of this room.
Okay.
Maybe a little narrower.
Okay, so there's a wall that cuts down the middle there so that we would be able to have students from one grade span on one side versus students on the, on the other side. So for example, in this scenario in front of you, sixth, seventh, eighth, and possibly ninth through twelve, students would enter from the left side. And they wouldn't, actually wouldn't be able to enter section five, they'd have no choice. If they were to go into the, for any food in the morning or to grab a snack, they would have to go in that area. The K five students would be entering from the right side in section five.
And I guess another question comes to mind, kind of goes back to your previous slide, the, no, no, stay, stay on this one. You see the green arrow at the top, the entrance to the elementary school?
Yes.
And I guess same question for the entrance to the high school and the entrance to the gym in section ten, are those locked during the day or open during the day?
That's part of the programming and planning piece that we need to determine. I think, I, I think my, my guess would be that the, the number ten section would be locked. But, and only push, able to push out in case of a fire or emergency. But we still have to determine in our planning with teachers and with our transition teams, which gates are locked and which are not. We haven't gone into that depth yet.
Okay.
Wouldn't tens locking not be up to us but to the school, but to the, but to the city?
Possibly so, it's, it's, it is something we haven't, I, I don't think the city has gotten there yet and, and we do have a joint, we have joint programming and planning. But it, that may be more up to the city since it's not the pool area.
That's one of the topics for discussion tomorrow, actually.
Oh.
Just pool operation.
Other questions on this or any of the subsequent slides?
Just two things, one thing's being with the, the gates keep coming up as far as a discussion item. With the security measure behind the, the gates themselves as far as panic hardware, are you providing, are, is, is there a provision for a type of mesh or screen so you can't reach through the, the gate in order to operate?
Good, good question. In fact, we, we've got, we've got a couple of mesh, mesh options. The current scope is a two-inch square, it's, it's a kind of a mesh grate really, but that's what size that opening is. That's probably one of the last, this is what we'll make on the, on the design, so we have some options there. But we've asked, we've asked Turner to put some samples together so that the city district can take a look at those at the site.
Okay. And then secondly, the second one has something to do with the pool. What level of competition is it slated for? Is it any level of competition?
So the, the pool is, it's basically is a community pool.
Okay.
It, as I understand it, it is, that's for the, I guess the division or the size of this high school. That pool is appropriate and is sized properly for the type of competitions that a small high school of this size will have. It is, is, as, as schools get larger, there are different requirements for sizes of pools. But it is a joint use pool, it's a joint community, school use pool.
So we will have timers, starting blocks, lane lines?
So yeah, there are lane lines.
No, go ahead.
There are lane, it has lane lines, I think there are six lanes. And then starting blocks and timers, there's a whole bunch of pool equipment that we actually purchased and starting blocks are among them, but they're not, they're not permanent. They're just, if you have a meet, they're, they, they, they put in place.
And then finally pertaining to the actual pool configuration, has it been verified as far as the, the correct size? And it's basically they do a measurement after the concrete's done in order to verify if it's competition ready?
I don't know if there's actually sort of, sort of a certification measurement. I know that the, the construction documents have been sized to, to comply with those standards. I'm not sure if there's some kind of interscholastic measurements that take place.
There usually is if it is a certain level of competition, so just verify if that's going to take place in order to make sure it's, it's, it's certified.
I might just want to add on to the conversation, the pool just, and I'm for your, everybody's information, because it's a shared use pool and it's a very important aspect of the city's program during a big chunk of the year. The pool was designed and, and shallowed to make it more workable and amenable for seniors and students. And so it is not your traditional meet certified. So it's more of a, it's, I think the purpose of the pool will, will be a strong asset for the, for the partnership, but certainly for the city's aspect of having a community pool more than a competition pool.
All right, thanks.
Other questions? Are you still going, Mr. Merritt? Can you go to the next slide, Mr. Baker? So looking at the P E going on there between the field and the gym, I just want to make sure I got the concept right here that.
Yeah, the thought was.
You're saying that, that in one half of the gym at eight-thirty, nine-thirty, they'll either be grade two or three or four or five?
Depending on the day of the week.
Depending on the master schedule.
That's right.
And another, is that another P E class in nine or is it the same P E class split?
It, it's an option really, I, I just marked it as a, you know, there could be, there could be a teacher in both, with a different class in both places or one, on the master schedule, sometimes there's, right now, there's, and this may be due to space, there's only one teacher doing P E on Mondays at eight-thirty, nine-thirty. So it may just be one teacher with one class in the gym. Or it could be more flexibility in the master schedule where they know that there's room for, you know, the three second grade classes to split, two teachers maybe in section nine, one inside the gym, depending on the activities they have planned for, for P E.
Or the P E teacher could decide today, it's a beautiful day, we're gonna be outside, we're gonna go, whatever, play tag in, in section nine.
That's right.
On another day, the same class might take everyone into the gym.
That's correct.
The, the field, you're saying there'd just be some kind of rotation between the high schools on the field for their P E one day? Or are you saying that that field could be split too? So maybe high school is half the field and P E, middle school is another half of the field.
That's correct, yeah. That's just a demonstrator display, the, some of the options as I was tinkering about and looking at the, the layout.
Would they both be in the gym at the same time or?
I don't know if, if they would do that, I don't think so, no. I think really that my diagram is to show that either the high school P E teacher could be in the gym or the middle school P E teacher with their class, thereby leaving the other teacher on the field. We currently have one high school P E teacher and one middle school P E teacher.
So what, what happens if it rains?
That, that's more of our programming and planning piece that we need to go ahead and determine. So in that case, it would likely mean high school would have one half of the gym, middle school would have the other half of the gym. The, I would imagine because the K five teachers have a lot more flexibility in when they can take their kids out to P E, and they certainly would here on this, in this space, that they wouldn't go out for P E that day.
Or use the multi-use room.
Or use the multi-use room, oh, thank you, that's right. Good point, yes, that's what they do down at Annie Yates.
In the morning, you could probably do that, not if it's a lunchtime.
Not a lunchtime, yeah, yeah.
And the, there are what, four P E periods a day? I mean, is it a ninth, a tenth, eleven, twelfth, or are there more than that?
I don't know the high school P E schedule that well. I know the middle school is non-stop, all day long, period by period, in terms of addressing the seventh, eighth graders and the, the middle school P E teacher.
It's six too, isn't it, or is it?
Well, I was gonna, yeah, I was about to add that the middle school teacher provides some support to the fourth and fifth grade students as well.
But it's six, seven and eight.
But primarily, yeah, middle school is six, seven, eight, yes, six, seven, eight for P E, yes.
Typical at high school is you have freshman P E, sophomore P E, and then an athletic P E.
And then sports.
Yeah, and that's it, because there's just not a, it's only a two-year requirement.
I guess that's right, seven through ten?
So a quick question, Mr. Baker, I'm seeing that in each of the descriptions for the diagram, the E C C L, there's a instance where it says the play structure and then the play equipment. What does the play equipment entail? Is that, how is that different than the play structure?
So the, if you look at where it says TK recess play structure, there's quite a large outdoor play structure that's geared more towards smaller kids in that location. The, where you see play structure along inside the community commons, we're looking at the possibility of adding a play structure there that's more geared towards older kids. There's also some movable play equipment that actually comes out in that, in that space that is used during the day, that can be put away at, when the school is not in session, so that that's a multi-use space can be used for that. I don't see, receive play equipment.
Right there.
The wall hollow.
A little, a little above, about three.
Okay, so it's, okay, in fact, the play equipment is what I spoke of, that's the, the move of the port of the stuff that comes out of storage and can be used during the day. And then that, that's, and there's a storage place there for that play equipment. And that's, again, that's more geared towards the grades two through five kids. And the play structure at the top of the page is geared towards the K through two, the smaller kids.
So there hasn't been a finalization of what equipment will actually be used for those children?
Yeah, the, the play structure at the top of the page is in the, is part of the construction contract and that will be installed this spring. And then the play equipment is being purchased and that again will be, that's something that is stored away in a room and then comes out during the day. And then the play structure that you see along the admin building, we're looking at the possibility of doing additional play structure there. We'll be bringing that back to the board for consideration in the next few weeks.
I ju, just to finish my, my prior point on the high school and middle school use, the, remember, Pat's is correct, maybe that there are only two periods. Anyway, my point is we'll see this in the full flush out. It might be there are only two periods where the high school is on the field and then there's more, even more space in the later parts of the day.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
For a middle school P E and/or a K five P E to get out on the field.
That's correct, yeah.
So that it's not the case that, that only high school, middle school kids get to use the field.
This is a brainstorm, this isn't an actual schedule, this was simply you plotting some things out. Like you wouldn't have all these things happening at eight-thirty to nine-thirty, school is just starting. I would hope we're not trying to have P E for everybody, for, well, I actually do like the idea of P E first thing in the morning, but I tend to be alone in that and it's just not practical.
Yeah, and I don't know the high school schedule very well, like I'll give you an example, the middle school schedule does have, the, the first class every day is eight-thirty to nine-thirty, right off the bat. So, P.
Yeah, oh, good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think the P E teacher has period two every day at Annie Yates for his prep. But, so, but, but yeah, this, this is, this is a sketch, some possibilities.
I'm sorry, I'm hoping we're not doing recess at eight-thirty, how's that?
Well, there is, well, not, in that time block, in that time block actually, now, now, this is, this is in part because of Annie Yates and the size that we have available. And the master schedule is very tight, that, in that time block, I believe K one recess probably is, again, it's within the, within that hour, I would suspect it's around nine, nine-ten.
I'm trying to be helpful and that's my mistake, I'm much more criticized. I'll bail out at this point.
We appreciate, I appreciate the help.
Yeah, I think, I think your point is well-taken, both of your points. What, what we tasked the superintendent with is, you know, the main things are gonna be the start of the day, the end of the day. And then during the day, the common spaces for P E and recess and lunch. And so we, we do want to see how it plays out for the whole, whole timeframe. Maybe there's a way to, I don't know, show that the recess is, there's a symbol or something that says not the whole eight-thirty, nine-thirty or, I don't know. Okay, any, any other, remember Merritt? Okay, any, uh, any other, uh, member Merritt?
Yes, just a minor thing. Uh, in the, uh, area five, is that, does that have any soft scape material for play area?
It does actually. It's not shown here. It's, they're at the, at the lower end towards the high school, there are two large sort of oval shaped, uh, uh, lo, grass, turf area, grass, natural grass areas that have a seating wall of, of various width and height around those. Um, and so they fill in those spaces. It's more, it's more of a sort of a seating area at that site, at that site. And they, they range from about, I think, six inches off the ground to about two feet off the ground.
And, and teachers at Annie Yates have, have, uh, very, um, um, helpful, and have a very helpful manner have reminded us at the meeting at Annie Yates recently that, hey, we are, we are, one of the teachers I said, said it this way, we are a four-square school. So we've had the architects go by, look at Annie Yates, look at the number of four-square, uh, areas, so we can consider getting some lines down in this area. The architects, I think, also made note of how many of the, uh, I forget what we call it with the pole and the ball hanging.
Tether pole.
Thank you, tether ball, tether ball poles we have so that we can also, cause we want to make sure there's some, uh, activities like the students have now at Annie Yates.
Isn't the amphitheater in there as well, though?
So if they, you'll see at the, uh, at the very top where it says stage, there is, uh, that's the, the, there's a raised platform for a stage there that, so if you had some kind of performance, the audience would be to the south of the stage. Also, there is a seating area, uh, in area nine towards the high school, there's a, there's a terrace seating area that's sort of, could be outdoor classroom. I'm, I'm not sure which amphitheater, those are two of those sorts of spaces.
There, there was more of an amphitheater-like design at some point, which I, I don't think we, is in the current final design.
There's not an amphitheater, the, the two, again, the two spaces, the, the, so the, in the corner there, near where the number four is, there is a, a terrace outdoor, like an outdoor classroom space.
I, I think, I think
Not an amphitheater per se.
I think member Affleck might be thinking of phase, the phase two designs that I recall, and I don't know how far out the design process was, included a theater. Is that member Affleck?
Yeah, even if you go to the first slide at the beginning here.
There's an informal amphitheater in area eight, cause you have, uh, bermed areas, don't you?
Right, right, correct, correct. There's berms in that area also.
I, I think, but John, I mean, in phase two that we're not working on right now for this project, there, I believe there was some sketch of a theater, actually indoor theater.
Yes, in, in area eleven, the parking lot, that's phase two. There's a building there which has a theater in the program.
Where, um, is, are board meetings take place? Is it the community commons room? Is it the community room? Is it the gym? Is it the stage?
Yeah, we haven't determined that yet. We'll have to have, I think, we have to give you all the tour and have you give us some input on that.
Okay, there's nothing in the admin building that's
Not space-wise. It would, it would have to be
Was a theater there in the old building?
Yeah, the community room has a very large space also.
Probably the community room is my guess.
Yeah.
Or the multipurpose room.
Or multipurpose, yeah.
Good question. So in the library, will there be actual, like, facilities where students can have, like, a study room? Is there, is there an opportunity for, like, certain sections to be closed off or quiet areas?
Yeah, there are two rooms adjacent to the, to this, the library. There's a larger room that's really a computer lab sort of classroom that's meant to be used both as a high school classroom or a library facility. It's kind of a flex space. And at the very corner of the building, at the corner of San Pablo and fifty, and, and forty-seventh, there's a smaller, sort of a conference room-sized room that's meant to be a quiet study room. Also multi-use from a community group can meet there. Um, it's, uh, probably about a quarter of the size of this room.
Any other questions for Mr. Baker or the superintendent? Any public comment? Okay, thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Baker, and thank you, Superintendent. Uh, you, your plan on this is to further flush it out and, and fill out the rest of the day?
Yes, I, I needed to keep developing it more. I, I do need to really consider that, that, uh, start time issue because that would also affect, uh, affect how this looks. And so I'll, um, I'll have some conversations with, uh, ETA and, uh, and bring that back to the board as well for consideration as we, as we consider, um, you know, do we have everyone starting at the exact same time or not, or do we, do we stagger that?
Okay, uh, we're on to our last action item, our discussion item, uh, which is six point two, Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is, um, uh, I think, um, a natural segue, uh, from this conversation. Uh, the, the meeting that Mr. Baker and I attended at Annie Yates, uh, a couple of weeks ago with the entire staff was very helpful. Ms. Dunn recorded, uh, and other questions, most of the, the teacher anxiety in the room was based around, um, uh, you know, what are the specifics around who's doing the, who's helping us with packing? Um, you know, is there a company that's being hired to help us move? So there, there are some, uh, moving type transition questions that the teachers were mostly asking about. Um, but it, it struck me between that meeting and the meeting recently with teachers on, on the site, uh, walking through that, uh, that, I think, I know we've talked about here at the board having an additional study session, but my thought on this, and I wanted to bring this to the board, is that I think it, to do something a little bit more interactive, maybe making it on a Saturday, have a, uh, special community workshop study session, gives more parents the opportunity to come, uh, engage in this, in this conversation as we try to, uh, keep this, uh, conversation going and make some final determinations in terms of what we're doing, in terms of grade levels here. Um, I think it would be helpful to the, the community and to the parents and to, uh, for people to also have the opportunity to be on the site. I think brings a lot of information and awareness. So my thought is that, you know, I know that we said we were gonna do another study session. That's part of the reason I'm working on, on these kinds of slides, but I'd like to ask the board to consider, if we're gonna do that, I think it should be on a Saturday with a facilitator where we can record notes. We can, you know, see what people, concerns are still, people as they, as they get to see the site up front and close, uh, see the things they're concerned about, see the things they like, and bring that back to the board, or I can bring that back to the board.
So, um, yeah, I mean, Superintendent and I have discussed this and, uh, I, I've been, uh, meeting with parents at Annie Yates and, and a couple of different forums, some smaller and also the PTL meeting as I reported last time, two weeks ago, to try to listen and hear what people's, um, hopes and concerns are with respect to the new site and, um, uh, and continuing, um, you know, options for continuing a configuration of some grades at, at Annie Yates. So, um, one takeaway from that was, uh, that, that people would rather not have a, a, a board-led study session where they have only two minutes to sort of give us feedback and then we move on. Uh, and it seems, you know, when we're having a study session on a night where we've got a lot of other, uh, agenda items that we need to get through, it, and it's a school night and it's, it's not the best forum and opportunity. So I, I, uh, agree with the superintendent that it, it makes sense to, to have a different format of a study session that does try to gather, um, it's not sort of led by the board, but is more led by a, a facilitator and, um, and, and have some breakout sessions where people can, uh, enunciate what their, what their hopes are, what their concerns are and what some possible solutions for their concerns are, whether that's, um, keep everyone at Annie Yates, whether that's, um, which I think we should, we should document and, and as one possible way. But also if, you know, if we're gonna do a K-three, okay, that's one solution. If we're gonna do a K-twelve, what's your solution for that, um, you know, concern? But that it should be in the context of having some, as the superintendent said, view of the site, explanation of the, the, the architecture and the, the flow plans.
And how things look, yeah. We, we walked through the entire three floors of the K-eight building last week when teachers walked into classrooms. The walls aren't all up, but it was useful.
But I, so I, I think it's a good idea and I think if we can get, um, you know, a list of, uh, of what people are looking forward to and what people are, are concerned about, we, in making a final decision of what our configurations are gonna look like, which we have to do pretty soon, um, we should be able to explain, you know, what our response is to the, the major concerns.
Right, right. And it's helpful to me as well because, you know, when I presented to all of you in November, I think, we presented some, some challenges regarding, you know, the financial aspects of different configurations, but also some revenue opportunities for the property at Annie Yates, whether it's partially open or entirely open. And it's hard for, for me to, or us to be able to move forward in those conversations until we square down what we're doing here. So I, I'd like to recommend if we do this that we do it as soon as, as possible. Maybe, you know, I, I've been eyeing March, well, the fifth or the twelfth, but I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards the twelfth of March if possible.
So thoughts, questions, comments by other board members?
Um, I do like the idea of garnering public's input, even though we've gone through the process before, but it's just when you see something in three dimension, it starts to crystallize as far as, uh, what's actually happening. Uh, to look at a piece of paper and see lines on it, it's a little difficult, uh, at times to understand what really is happening. So I think, um, as far as site visit and actual site use, uh, walkthroughs and such will help administer that idea or that, foster that idea. And then secondly, uh, to garner information as far as, uh, people's concerns for the configuration of both sites. Um, that would help go a long way as far as, um, you know, making a, making a decision. So yeah, I would welcome the, the, the process.
I feel, I agree as well, um, not to piggyback so much, but when it comes down to getting a feel for an actual vicinity or a place, it's better to, you know, be able to see it, um, just in plain sight. So getting a, a, not even just a bird's eye view on paper, but an actual feel, um, as to what we have in front of us in terms of the materials and the different square footage that we can walk through, so it would definitely be a good idea.
We've been talking about it for a while. I think we need to do it.
Okay, um, it sounds like everyone thinks it's, it's a good idea to move forward with that. Um, so you, um, we'll try to narrow down a date and, and, you know, I think the other key thing is then getting information out probably through the, certainly through the email
Mm-hmm.
and robo-calls and, um, and I don't think we should limit it to the, the actual enrolled community, but also the, the broader.
Okay.
So the city perhaps can help us.
We have a city schools meeting next week, so we can announce it at that time, uh, or even prior to that, but, uh, that's another reminder time.
Uh, yeah. And Miss, um, Collins, I'm sorry, Miss Collins, I don't have your hyphenated name, Miss Collins.
Collins Rogers.
Rogers, I'm sorry, apologies. That's taking a little, Miss Collins Rogers, uh, I don't know if we've told you about the joint committee we have with the city schools where we meet, I believe it's about every two months, two and a half months?
Three or, I think it's three or four. Six times a year?
So we have a, a joint meeting with the city, we call city schools, and so that one's, that's coming right, right up around the corner.
March, next week.
Next week.
Next Thursday. Yeah, March third.
Okay, any, any public, uh, comment on this item?
Here.
All right, um, that concludes our discussion action items. And, uh, we're on to board reports and announcements. Are there any board reports or announcements?
Yes, I have one.
Uh, yes, I have a report for the ACSBA general meeting on February eighteenth.
You actually went to one?
Yes.
They exist.
Yes, they exist.
Maybe you can tell folks at home what the ACSBA is.
Um, yeah, your guess is as good as mine. No, just kidding. Uh, it's Alameda County, uh, School Board Association General Meeting. Um, the topic at hand was, uh, adult ed and it did bring up some interesting and timely, uh, information. But just a brief summary, uh, I took some notes here and it was a brief summary. There's three consortium that make up the Alameda County's adult ed program. Since being decimated by budget cuts over the past few years, adult ed has been repurposed or refocused. And Reunified resides within the Northern Consortium, but does not have an adult ed program. Uh, representatives of the consortium presented various aspects of the adult ed. Uh, emphasis was given to the following. The alda, the adult ed program encompasses several goals with the most important one being workforce development per state requirements, which incorporates CTE, career tech, career technical education, and another worthwhile goal is family literacy. Basically assistance for older adults who have children who want to better understand common core and have the ability to assist their child. Overall, a positive but guarded optimism for the future of adult ed in Alameda County. That's what I came away from it. But then finally, uh, from this meeting is what, is that monies are available from the state and we have several facilities that could work in bringing adult ed program to our district and if it satisfies any specific LCP requirement.
Okay. All right, thank you for that report. Other board reports or announcements? Seeing none, um, calendar review, Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so we have our city schools meeting, as we were just discussing, coming up, uh, next week on March the third, Thursday at five-thirty PM. And I do believe, just to say this out loud to all of you, that the plan for quite a while from the city side and, and, and my meetings with them is that this meeting will be actually at ECL.
The gym.
So yeah, the gym. I think the meeting will actually start with a, a tour or, uh, on, on the agenda, I believe.
That's what we discussed and maybe starting at five?
Uh, yeah, I need to go back and check if we're starting at five or five-thirty. I need to find out if they're changing.
The plan would start a little earlier, get more light.
Yeah, yeah, cause we have another week before, I think daylight savings time goes back for, or pushes forward for us. Uh, so that is our next meeting right now. I'll, I'll have to, I'll determine if it's five or five-thirty. Um, we have a citizens oversight committee meeting coming up on March eighth at five PM. Um, they actually, very interested actually, uh, uh, in holding their meeting as well at ECL. Uh, I don't know if that's the case, but that may be the case. Um, and then we have our next school board meeting on Wednesday, March ninth.
Okay. All right, uh, we will now adjourn to closed session to consider one item.